Okay, I'd like to call this meeting here in North City Council, June 2nd, 2014. North, I'll just call it all.
Mrs. Hall?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Marmy?
Here.
Mr. Ratt?
Here.
Mr. Roletta?
Here.
Mr. Blake?
Here.
Mr. Bug?
Here.
Mr. Cost?
Here.
Mrs. Floyd?
Here.
And Mr. Guthrie?
Here.
We have all present on the council this evening. Next on the agenda, we have the invocation by Mrs. Floyd, called by the legislature. Please stand.
I would ask that, before I start the prayer, that you all bow your heads and have a moment of silence for Ed Adashell, First Ward Councilmember, who passed away, as I understand it, on Saturday from heart-related issues. We don't know arrangements at this point, but I'm sure they'll be in favor very shortly. So, would you have a moment of silence, please? Almighty God, we thank you for the life of Ed Adashell and for the work that he did with the city. We ask that you be with his family and friends as they go through this difficult time. As we enter the summer season, and we have all these students who have graduated from high school and college locally, we ask that you be with them as they make decisions for their futures. We ask that you be with us as citizens, as we have lots of young people who will be out and about in the community because they're not in school. We ask that you protect them and keep them safe and help us to watch after them. We ask that you be with us as we make these decisions tonight and help guide us in our decision-making. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I would like to leave the nation to the flag of the United States of America and to the required importance of standing, what a nation, Almighty God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. Next on the agenda this evening, we have caucus. There is a couple things listed under caucus this evening, but we will not be doing those tonight. We thought we will possibly be devoting on the Factfinders Report from the FOP. My understanding is that got rejected earlier today, so if only one side rejects it, it goes to binding arbitration, so we will not be voting on that this evening. Do we have anything else for caucus this evening? Seeing nothing, we'll move to the minutes of the May 19, 2014 council meeting. Is there a motion to approve those? Motion. Motion by Mr. Ratt. Second by Mr. Johnson. All is favor signified by saying aye. Post same sign. That passes. Thank you. We have three reports of standing committees this evening, one from Finance, one from Ways and Means, and one from Capital Improvements. Without objection, those will be received and filed. Also, we have a report from Bob Bard Jones, the Income Tax Administrator. The Income Tax Revenue Report is of May 15, 2014, and will also, without objection, be received and filed. And we have two communications this evening, one from Paul Moran, comments that he made at the council meeting on May 19, 2014, and Park National Bank, a letter regarding the annual inspection of the North Memorial Building at Cedar Hill Cemetery. Also, without objection, those will be received and filed. Next on the agenda tonight, we have comments from citizens. There's two places for citizens' comments. One's now before the legislation, and one is after. All we ask is to give your name and address for the record. Do we have anyone who would like to speak at this first citizens' conference? Seeing that, when we move on to legislation, first, we have ordinances on the second reading, ordinance 14-09.
Ordinance 14-09, by Mr. Ratt and Mrs. Floyd, and ordinance amending Chapter 618 of the Codified Ordnances of the City of North Ohio regarding sanctions for violations resulting in serious injury to persons.
You've heard the second reading of 14-09. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Ratt?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt 14-09.
Motion by Mr. Ratt. Second. Second by Mrs. Floyd. Do we have any discussion on 14-09?
Mr. President.
Mr. Ratt?
If this is a simple ordinance, it simply gives the judge discretion to order a dog put down, destroyed, if it causes serious physical injury. Serious physical injury is a very defined term in the legal system. It's a difference between if a person causes serious physical injury to another person, it's a difference between assault, malicious assault, the difference between misdemeanor and felony. It's a definition that's used widely and regularly in court systems. It is a discretionary ruling by the judge, so the judge has the ability to hear any and all evidence that somebody wants to bring forward in defense of the dog. If he wanted to do a behavioral assessment, the judge should have the ability to hear the findings of that. If there's testimony of witnesses, the judge has the ability to hear those testimonies. And then the judge has the ability to make the ruling as he sees fit. So, this is not about a dog nipping somebody in the finger. This is not about a dog that nips somebody to defend itself when it's being antagonized. It's about a vicious dog running loose that maules somebody or rips their face off. I just don't want to see that dog have a second chance to do that. So, this eliminates that free first flight.
Thank you, Mr. Ratt. Anyone else? Seeing that, I'll just call the whole vote.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Ratt?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
No.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bug?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
14-09 has passed. Next, we have ordinances on the first reading, 14-13.
Ordinance 14-13, by Mr. Cost, Mr. Ratt, Mrs. Floyd, and ordinance levying an additional income tax of .15% for the purpose of raising general operating revenues specifically and exclusively dedicated to the general construction, reconstruction, resurfacing, and repair of streets, roads, bridges, and sidewalks on all taxable salaries, wages, commissions, and other compensation as set forth herein, as well as on all taxable net profits earned by businesses, professions, or other activities as set forth herein in providing for the collection and enforcement thereof.
14-13 will be held for a second reading. Let me get that read again. Next, we have resolutions on the second reading, 14-40.
Resolution 14-40, by Mr. Blake, Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Ratt. A resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of the municipal corporation with regard to the retention of outside legal counsel.
You've heard the second reading of 14-40. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Blake?
Need to adopt Resolution 14-40.
Motion by Mr. Blake.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Floyd. Do we have any discussion?
Mr. Marmy? Thank you, Mr. President. I wish to split this legislation into two separate pieces, you know, 1440A and 1440B. I wish to vote on the two appropriations separately, because I'm in support of one but not in support of the other, and I just would like those resolutions to be split. So, I'll make the motion to split it to Resolution 1440A and 1440B.
Mr. Marmy has made the motion to split 1440A and B, which is in the package. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Blake. Mr. Marmy stated the reason, so I believe we now vote on that without discussion, right? Mr. Sassen?
Correct.
No, we're going to vote on split. This is the vote, this is split.
Ms. Hall?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Ratt?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bug?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
And Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
So, 1440A will be split into two resolutions, which is 1440A and 1440B, which is in the package. Okay, let's see. So, we'll need a resolution to adopt 1440A, or a...
Both.
A motion, yeah.
A motion and second under.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt 1440A?
So...
Motion by Mr. Blake?
Second.
There's a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 1440A? Mr. President? Mr. Marmy?
Yeah, this is the part of the legislation that I am not in support of. It is the request of the administration to take $12,000 out of the Budget Stabilization Fund. I believe that we need to look within the various accounts in order to appropriate this money and not have it come from the Budget Stabilization. An amount of $12,000 is a large amount. However, it's been commented on that, you know, the Budget Stabilization is not something for little distributions and appropriations. It's something that is an emergency by nature, and it's going to be a larger amount. Our auditor has indicated that we're fastly approaching the, what I call, the red zone as far as what will hurt our bond rating and our ability to borrow money if we continue to dip into this Budget Stabilization Fund. In addition, we have some things that are currently staring at the face that are possibilities of large expenditures, and those are things that do come from Budget Stabilization. There's a fire truck that was recently damaged, and we don't know how that's going to be paid for, or what's going to happen there, whether insurance is going to cover it or not, but that is one item. There's some TIF money that has not been collected, and that's a concern because that's revenue that we anticipated. In addition, we have estimated that we'd be about a $300,000 overage on collections, and we are at about $17,000, I believe, after the first quarter, so we're not in target to reach that, so we're a little bit short there. And I just think that tapping into this Budget Stabilization is not a prudent thing to do fiscally for our city and for our ability to borrow, in particular, when it comes to bonds. We have some bonds that we're going to have to renegotiate at various times. We continuously do that in order to try to maintain, have that money as borrowed money versus having to pay for it all, and I just feel that it is not a prudent thing to do, and that's why I'm opposed to this portion of it.
Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Marmy. Mr. Guthrie?
Yeah, Mr. President, I was wondering, could we invite someone from the administration to comment on this?
Well, normally, that wouldn't be the case, but we could ask the mayor if you'd like to speak.
The rules allow it.
Yeah, Mike, will you speak to the election or HR department and spend here some...
Speak. Thought you had a question.
Well, Mr. President, if you want to frame it this way, I'd like to know your feelings regarding Mr. Marmy's argument that we should not use Budget Stabilization but rather use other funding for this.
I...My question would be, what is the other funding? We have bills, we just got a Factfinders Report back that we have to pay for. Looks like we'll be going to binding arbitration. We still have a pass-me contract to negotiate, and I don't know that there are any other funds available.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Any other discussion on 14-40A? Mr. Marmy?
I guess that my only contention with the comments that there's no other funds to be found, it's amazing how when we need radios, we find money; when we need this or that, we find money, but when it comes to outside legal counsel, we can't find money. We found more than $12,000. So, you know, it's my contention that, look, you have to be within your budget until it hurts, and not only that, if we haven't spent money on something and we don't know whether or not we're going to, why don't we use that now? And if there is a rainy day or something in the future, then we use it for that. But dipping into this Budget Stabilization is just for this and for that, and like you just indicated, there's more to come. So, what are we going to do? Pull more money from this? We've already pulled six over six figures from this fund this year, and it's not...The whole purpose of this Budget Stabilization was established so then the cash carryover would be sufficient enough to maintain our bond rating. And not only that, it is for that rainy day type of a situation, that emergency situation like a wrecked fire truck or something like that that occurs, and it's something that we want to make sure we keep as a positive figure so then that bond rating does not go down below. We do have the ability to borrow for capital improvement dollars or whatever, building of a fire station, you know, trucks for the street department, whatever it is, we have bridges or whatever it is, we get it at a lower rate, and that's the purpose of this Budget Stabilization. And we need to make sure we maintain that dollar amount at a sufficient level that it's not going to jeopardize that.
Thank you, Mr. Marmy. Anyone else? I'll just call the whole vote on 1440A.
Ms. Hall?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Marmy?
No.
Mr. Ratt?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
No.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bug?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
And Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
We have six yeses and four no's, I believe. So, 1440 does pass the way it's written, it will come from the Budget Stabilization Fund. Next, we have 1440B. Is there...
Is there a problem?
Well...
Yes, it is.
I mean, yes, was there something else on there? Yes. Is there a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt 1440B, Mr. Blake? Second by Mr. Marmy. Is there any discussion on 1440B?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmy?
Yeah, I'm just going to explain my yes vote on this. I'm in support of paying for the bills, don't get me wrong. I just didn't like the fund that it's coming from. This is the actual general fund expenditure that's going to take place on this portion of the legislation, and I know we have to pay the bills, and I realize what it's for and the process and everything else, so I am in support of this portion of it.
Thank you, Mr. Marmy. Anyone else? I'll just call the whole vote.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Ratt?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bug?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
And Mr. Guthrie?
No.
1440B has passed. Next, we have resolutions on the first reading, 14-44.
Resolution 14-44, by Mr. Blake, Mr. Cost, Mr. Ratt, Mrs. Floyd, and Mr. Marmy. A resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of the municipal corporation.
14-44 will be held for a second reading. Next, we have 14-45.
Resolution 14-45, by Ms. Hall, Mr. Cost, Mr. Ratt, Mrs. Floyd, and Mr. Marmy. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
14-45 will be held for a second reading. Next, we have 14-46.
Resolution 14-46, by Mr. Cost, Mr. Ratt, Mrs. Floyd. A resolution providing for the submission to the electors of the City of North Ohio of the question as to passage of a .15% additional income tax levy dedicated to general construction, reconstruction, resurfacing, and repair of streets, roads, bridges, and sidewalks within municipality.
14-46 will be held for a second reading. And that is the end of our legislation this evening. Next, we have our second opportunity for citizens' comments. Do we have anyone?
Couldn't let it pass, though. Nancy Whaley, 7441 Stewart Road. I came this evening just to talk a little bit about the Fair Housing Program. I know a lot of you are familiar with the program. The city has a contract with Donnie Eager and Associates, for those of you that don't know much about the Fair Housing Program, to provide a fair housing and landlord tenant services program for the City of North. Last May, Mr. Eager gave a report to the Economic Development Committee at the request of the Chair round the limits. That was, I believe, around the middle of May 2013. Well, it's been a year, and, in my opinion, few things have changed with this program. There is a large sign that was bought, I think it was a little over $2,000, and I believe it was placed in close proximity to City Hall. And also, the phone number that wasn't any...wasn't good anymore, it's now a valid number. The number got changed because the number that was on all the literature was not a working number, it was a 349 number. So, those two things have been changed. Mr. Eager holds what he calls the landlord tenant clinics each month on the first and third Tuesday from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. That's a total of 10 hours a month. In the first four months of this fiscal, well, in this year, a total of four people have gone through the clinic. So, that's, Mr. Eager worked 40 hours and serviced four people. In the same timeframe last year, 2012, that same timeframe, he saw nine people, which was almost twice as many, but still 40 hours, nine people. Not getting a lot of traffic, I don't think, in those tenant landlord clinics. Each month, Mr. Eager is required, by his contract, to submit a report to the Department of Development, which entails the number of phone calls he's received and the nature of the calls. There's also a requirement that he breaks down the type of people who are calling, for example, low-income, female head of household, Hispanic, those are HUD reporting regulations. Mr. Eager also reports any community outreach and office hours he has kept. Sometimes I wonder if I'm the only person that looks at these reports, and I will say that the Department of Development, Melissa and Mr. Moutter are very gracious and send me this information every month, sometimes without me even asking, so I do have to thank them for that. Mr. Eager also is required to submit an annual report to the city, which, for the past two years, I've requested, and it's taken a little bit of teeth-pulling, I believe, from Mr. Moutter and from myself, to get this report, and it's been well into March or April when I've received the report.
Which report?
Excuse me?
Which report did you say?
It's the annual fair housing report that he's required. It's in his contract to give to the city. In this report, which I brought this year's, there's no total for how many people have been serviced by this office or what types of area are being called about, which, to me, you would think that would be kind of a itemized, okay, we had 100 and so many calls, we had so many on escrow, but nowhere is there...you have to add it up yourself. There's no to...okay, for example, yeah, bedbugs are no repair. You'll find a schedule of the fair housing training in this report, but the dates don't match the month of reports, and also, there's sign-in sheets from the previous year end of the current year. For example, in 2013, he's got 2000...we can't speak tonight, 2012 sign-in sheets. So, I do reports for my office, it's just kind of a sloppy job, in my opinion. In 2012, Mr. Eager conducted seven training sessions at the library for the public, a total of 10 people attended in 2012. In 2013, there were six training sessions, seven people attended. I realize this is a very small program that the city runs. I think his contract is $18,000 or $20,000 a year. To me, that's a lot of money, but I know in the big scheme of things for a city budget, that's very small. And I know it's a requirement to have fair housing, to receive CPG funds, but I feel the program could be more robust and reach and educate more people than it currently does. I truly believe this. The Citizens Committee for Housing Rights, which I'm a part of, has decided to start going to one food pantry a month to pass out literature on tenant rights. Molly Pansini is, I believe, chairing that, and she's going to...she was at the St. Vincent last month, I believe. The Housing Group has also had a presence in eviction court consistently. Every two weeks, as many of you know, eviction court is held up on third or fourth floor. We've had a presence there, and we hand out tenant rights literature, and we've asked Judge Stansberry if we can actually keep tenants' rights literature there since there's eviction literature for the landlords. A nice balance, we'd be...everybody would have access to information. We've also received private donations, so the Citizens Committee for Housing Rights can make the Ohio Landlord Tenant Law Book. Have you ever seen the little blue books that are passed out at Legal Aid, and maybe Mr. Eager has? Well, those are expensive, they're almost a bucket piece to reproduce, and so we've had people privately donate money so we can reproduce those to give out to people in eviction court and at the food pantry. My question to anyone who's listening is, why is Mr. Eager not doing some of the same things that I, as a private citizen in the Housing Group, is doing? In order to reach as many people as possible, and people that are, you know, low-income people in the city, we got to think outside the box. They're not going to come to us. I know we think they will, but they won't. They're working every day just to make ends meet, so we need to figure out a way to reach these folks. And going to food pantries was not my idea, it was a great idea though, I wish we thought of it a couple years ago. That way, we can have literature there so people can be educated on their rights and responsibilities as a tenant. I also have personal knowledge of two tenants who met with Mr. Eager at the end of last September to file a complaint, and Mr. Eager never followed up with these two tenants, even though the tenants have made numerous phone calls and are still making numerous phone calls. In my opinion, this is not acceptable. If any of you want to look at the fair housing annual report, I brought the whole thing, I'm sure Mr. Moutter has a copy of it up in the DOD. As you can tell, I'm a little passionate about this. I think we need...the end game is if more tenants and landlords, but mostly tenants, were educated on their rights and responsibilities of a tenant, maybe we wouldn't have as many in eviction court every two weeks. Maybe we wouldn't have people renting housing that's really not acceptable if they were educated a little bit more. This is one way to educate the citizenry. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Anyone else? Mr. Marmy?
Nancy, I just want to say that I do meet with Donnie Eager every Tuesday when he comes in, says I'm probably the only director who's ever met with him since he's been working here, and I do appreciate your comments, and also, typically, when people aren't getting replied back to they've either left the wrong phone numbers or the phone numbers no longer work. And whether that's true in each case, I don't know, but if there is an issue, I'd want to know about that. So, that's been my experience in meeting with him and speaking with him as well. So, I just want to comment on that briefly, because there are...sometimes there are misunderstandings with numbers being given. Thank you.
Mr. Moutter, a question.
Quick, Jake, quick?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Moutter, I think that Nancy raises a concern, actually, that we talked about last year. Is there any possibility that, especially with our finances being flat with community development dollars being darn near flat or actually dropping, that we could bring...we could train someone and bring this in-house so that you could keep your finger on it more?
I suppose there's that potential. I don't know how much training would take to get up to speed to run a program like this. It's like any other program, there's a lot of stipulations, there's a lot of regulations that are involved, I'm sure there's a lot of continuing education and so on. So, that's probably the best response I can give you at this time, Mark. It's certainly something that could possibly be looked at, but that's one of the reasons I believe the city did outsource this, because Mr. Eager did bring up 30 years of experience in fair housing. That's a lot of experience that he brings to the table, and that's, I believe, the reason that the contract was put together.
Thank you, Mr. Moutter. Anyone else for citizens' comments this evening? Mr. Moran?
Paul Moran, 63 North Fourth Street. I've got three concerns that ring for the city. This building on 21 West Canal Street, the roof has since collapsed in, the last time I entered it, and somehow, one of the doors has been pried or pushed open, and a child or a peck could go right down into the basement of the place. There's no X or nothing on it, it's just a major safety hazard. There's no X or nothing on it, it's just a major safety hazard downtown. And I'd like that somebody do something as soon as possible, for there is an unfortunate situation in that matter, on that property. It's right by the exercise place and behind over there, the concrete building. But it is open now, so anybody can go right into it, unfortunately. Another matter, now, I was wondering if the ground has been tested for any chemicals, or the garage was out on South 4th Street, like on building a new fire station. You know, like any oils or any freeze or anything that's leaked into the ground, and the garage was there all those years, I was wondering if they're gonna test on it sort of before it gets much further into the project on that. And I want to give an opinion on this lot behind City Hall, I know the guy's planning to put a parking lot in. But, you know, I'd like to see a picnic area there, that would be a lot more attractive, a picnic area. I met a guy a couple of weekends ago, he's from Dayton, Ohio, and he was taking pictures of our historic buildings, and I was talking with him, you know. And, you know, the more we can do to make better impressions on visitors that come in here all the time, we don't even, we're not aware of people coming here, like that man from Dayton, he's here taking pictures of our historic buildings. He's been to Zanesville, Lancaster, around Burn, he travels the whole state, taking pictures. Now, we need to do everything we can to make a good impression. And the Port Authority said that there's ample parking downtown. This is in the Advocate, January 25th of this year. The results, even Mr. Fred Erners made good comments about the parking situation down here. So really, I don't see there's any further need for additional parking lots with all this positive feedback, research has been done on it. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moran. Anyone else this evening? Any directors this evening? For Honor, Mr. Johnson.
Oh, pass.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. All right. Mayor Hall.
Had a good weekend, Mayor Pansy, had relay for life out at the TJ Evans Athletic Complex. I want to thank all the employees that did show up. We had 10 out there, and somebody walked in for nearly the 18-hour period, which was a good fundraiser for Mayor Pansy. The weather did hold out wonderfully. Strawberries on the Square, had a great crowd this weekend, and great weekend to have good weather for that, as you look out that way, and so, pleased to see the good weather, but alternating rain and, of course, I guess, I don't know.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Hall.
Okay.
Mr. Johnson?
Hi, Dan.
Mr. Mauder?
Thank you, Mr. President. Nancy, I appreciate you bringing in the information to us. It's always good to be well informed about what's happening. I believe Director Mauder should evaluate annually the performance that's being conducted within the contract. It's his administrative function to determine who is awarded the contract. If there's something where he's not, or, you know, he, Mr. Eager, is not performing, I would just hope that Mr. Mauder would bring that to his attention. It's something that if, you know, discussion or dialogue from this body needs to take place, but when push comes to shove, it is an administrative decision as far as who is given that contract. And I'm not even certain how often it can go out to bids, whether it's an annual, five years, I'm seeing a five, or are you waiting to? So, but yeah, that can always be evaluated, and wherever we're in that cycle. But I appreciate you bringing that to our attention. I want to thank Director Rhodes, he finally got some information, and it wasn't from his, waiting on him, but it's taken a while for him to get it to me, because he has to find out from the county some information, that basically what it boils down to is, we tried to see if there were properties that the city owned and wish we could get additional tax credits for that we shouldn't be paying taxes on. And it looks like year-to-date, they've found that we have about an additional, a little over $8,000 annually, that's gonna be saved because we've looked into those. We're gonna continue to look into properties that, you know, we can possibly lower our tax burden, or even leave it completely, because it is a city property. So I want to thank him for doing all that research and getting back with me on that. And then finally, I want to wish the NC baseball team the best fortune this week in their bid for another state championship. They will play Thursday at 1:00, and it should be an exciting week. If they continue on and win that game, then it'll be, Saturday will be the state championship. So I want to wish the NC baseball team and the entire program the best of fortune with that.
Mr. Mauder, Mr. Rapp?
Thank you. I want to say, we've all missed Ed Haddish, it was fairly close, as close as you can be to a council member, he's sitting a couple seats over from, but you and I have a closer relationship than any son. As far as 1409 goes, the Dogfight, thank you all for your support and your indulgence. This is not a personal agenda, although I have personal experience that lends a little bit of experience and knowledge and expertise to this. There is no agenda here. There's no personal being for me to get by this. And I'm not ignoring anything else. We take everything into serious consideration. This is just one small thing, but there's plenty of other things that I focus on as well. As far as 1448 goes, with the budget stabilization, I voted for that today, although only because of timing. I gotta say that I kind of agree with Mr. Mauder that we do need to look. For dollar amounts, you know, as small as $10,000 or $12,000, we need to look at other areas where we can make some cuts, I guess. I don't know where those will come from, but for something of that nature, if we do have another derecho or windstorm, or whatever you call it, or some other catastrophe here in the city, we're gonna be in trouble. So I voted for it today, but I do want to see some other looks. I guess that's about it. Nancy, I'd like to bend your ear a little bit after we, if you go to the Rock, and then I'll pass.
Mr. Rapp? Mr. Lott? Thank you, I'll pass. Mr. Floyd?
I want to thank Nancy for bringing up the issues with the fair housing. She and I have had conversations about fair housing, so I appreciate that. It would be interesting to, I don't know when that five-year contract is up, but I agree with the previous comments that perhaps we should look at what stipulation are in that contract and make sure that Mr. Eager is performing to those stipulations. So thank you for bringing that point up, and thank you for working on that, Mark. I don't know if Director Rhodes is out there, but the mayor's here. He's out there? Okay. I just want to thank Director Rhodes and the mayor. South 21st Street, then if you crossed at some point in time, and, you know, the railroad crossing there at South 21st Street has just been there. And so I want to thank Director Rhodes for signing a letter with me to send to the railroad, so we can put some pressure on the railroad to get that crossing fixed. That's been a headache for some time. I know it's hard to make the railroad do anything, but at least we can do what we can to advocate for the residents that travel on that road. So thank you, Mayor, thank you Director Rhodes for that. Mr. Moran, thank you for your comments. I always appreciate your letters and things of that nature. And I can't leave tonight without saying that if you read the Advocate today, there's an article about Mr. Ronnie Schlosser in Millwill Tavern, which is a south-north gateway, as I'll call it. And, you know, the Schlosser family have done a lot for the south end, and maybe some of us have been to that establishment and smiled, and so, but it's always a good time to go down to the Millwill. So I was pleased to see the tavern have a nice article in there. Ronnie's doing a lot for the south end with, hit the party house hosts meetings for the South North Civic Association. He really cares about the neighborhood and the community, and I was happy to see that article today. And not only what work that Ronnie is doing, but Bruski's Pizza will be opening up soon right there on Culver, and then the Deadman's Ice Cream Shop right there on West National Drive will be opening up soon. So there's a lot of small business activity happening in the south end, and proudly be a part of that, and just even to advocate for them, that's a great thing. Speaking of advocating, it is summertime, and so there are two picnics coming up. I gave everybody one of these up here on the bench here. And this Saturday, 11:30 to 1:30, at the Old Red Cross Building, there'll be a south-side community picnic. This one is sponsored by the Beadings Fellowship Church, and then also with Vertical 196, which is a branch of Scott Hayes Group with Outlook Center. And so it's gonna be a real good time, people are welcome to come. It's Saturday, 11:30 to 1:30, we'll have bouncy houses, games, face painting, food for kids, and stuff like that, so it should be a really good type of fellowship with neighbors and things. Then the following Saturday, the 14th, is the third annual graduation picnic for the neighborhood. And so this will be our third year that the South North Civic Association has honored high school graduates in the neighborhood. And so that's gonna be at the Moose Lodge on National Drive, and that's from 12 to 2 on the 14th. And Jen, you're on the computer side, right down the south, and you guys are always welcome to come to both of those picnics. So we've got two picnics coming up. And if you forget everything that I said, or if you forgot everything, or you just didn't listen to me, we have a website that's gonna be launching on Wednesday. And our website is mysouthnorth.org. And so that website will be launching on Wednesday, and we're really excited about this. Chase Filoni and his team, right behind the Advocate Building over here, I forget the address, standalone media house, they've been working with the Civic Association to launch this website, and we're really excited about that. So once again, it's www.mysouthnorth.org, and, with that, I'll pass. Oh, I'm sorry, Call Finance, baby.
Thank you, Mr. Floyd. Mr. Bob?
I'll pass.
Mr. Cos?
I wanted to thank anybody and everybody involved, the Parks Department, for what a nice event we had Memorial Day. Cedar Hill Cemetery looked great. It was, as always, a really, really nice event that I really think is very important for our community. It was also nice to be able to attend the announcements for the farmers' market previewing. Another thing that's gonna be a lot of good news for downtown Newark. It's nice to see those kind of things moving forward. And I need to call for a suburban service committee meeting. Is that okay?
Thank you, Mr. Cos. Mrs. Floyd?
I certainly think many of us will miss Ed Haddish. I had talked to him, probably about six weeks ago, I called just to see how he was doing. And at that point, he wasn't doing real well. I think since he had his heart valve surgery, he just, it didn't do what it was supposed to do. And so I was sorry to hear that he had passed away this past weekend. On a happier note, if any of you missed the Squonk Opera on the Square, sponsored by the Midland, it is one of the strangest, most indescribable things I have ever seen, but it was a lot of fun, and it attracted a lot of people at the strawberry festival. So thank you to the Midland for bringing them in. And finally, First Presbyterian Church does the community roundtable, so the mayor was at the first one. The second one is about a week and a half away, on Wednesday, June 11. And Judge Brandstuhl will be the speaker. There's a meal at 12:00. If you're out there by 1:00, so if they make it up, please do so. And we're counting that.
Mrs. Floyd? Mr. Guthrie?
Thanks, Mr. President. Mayor mentioned strawberries on the square, it was a, I got a, as a poll, and I got a report, and it sounds like it was a record here for strawberries on the square. And it was, you know, they had really great weather, and it was just a real nice event. I was, in the four hours that I worked there with Polmas, I was intrigued with the number of people from outside of our community that came. I haven't noticed it as much in the past as I did this year, and that was really, that was really good. Listen, I wanted to say just a word about the, as everyone knows, the FOP rejected the Fact Finders report, and of course, we all know that there's some risk. I think the fact that there was risk involved, something to do with some of the members of council votes on the firefighters' Fact Finder report on the affirmative side. And so, even though there's some risk, I understand why the members of the FOP took the action that they did, and I respect that. And, you know, this now moves on to work within the parameters set forth by the collective bargaining law. I really, you know, I think that, you know, we really need to look into this fair housing thing a little bit more. I think one of our concerns last year was that there was quite a bit of time left in the contract. But I think that Clark is gonna share the annual report with us via email, and that's a good thing. The only thing I wanted to mention is, Mr. Roulette and I, and thanks, by the way, for volunteering to help Polmas at the strawberries festival, but we were blessed with the opportunity to receive this lovely little anti-tax handout, which, by the way, has everybody's email addresses on it. And so you might be hearing from some folks, got phone numbers too. And I'm not sure exactly, I thought that the lady told me that it was Tea Party-related, I'm not sure. And I've got extra copies in my car, and I meant to bring them in so all of you could see it. But it, just, of course, it's against any new tax, and it specifically says, Jeremy Blake, Mark Guthrie, and their allies have only been in the majority under City Council for five months, and have already maxed out the taxes on license plates, and are now proposing an income tax increase, dragging Mayor Hall right behind. So that's a wonderful little piece of misinformation, was going around to hundreds of people on strawberries on the square. It is a freedom of speech issue. I think it probably should have had a disclaimer. And I did, maybe Mr. Roulette will share his copy with some on the other end. But I, the last thing I wanted to say, I was really touched tonight, I went for a couple reasons. I went to my granddaughter's graduation, Heritage Middle School, and, which is one of our many beautiful new schools in our school district. And we've all heard a lot of powerful speeches in our lifetimes, I'm sure. But the retiring principal, Mr., is it Suriano?
Suriano.
Suriano gave one of the, and I only got to hear half of it, because I had to leave. One of the most powerful speeches I've ever heard, inspiring speeches, about how a student was the reason he accepted the permanent principal's job there. Because there was a student that obviously needed him and needed guidance, and he was there as a temporary principal. And he had made a decision to accept the position, and the young man who was in the office in timeout asked him, "Well, are you gonna stay?" And he made his decision at that very moment. That that young man, and many others just like him, needed him to be there. And this was his last, I think, official event at Heritage, and it was a proud moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Our next committee will be June the 9th at 5:30 here in this room. Our next council meeting is June 16th at 7:00 p.m.